Thing that should have occurred last week, um, when we do each vote. Would you like me to do the roll call of the vote? And then we let the record reflect what the, um, the eyes and nays are.
Yes, and when we get to the roll call, would you call the roll call so that each of us can chime in?
It's not showing me. I think something's wrong with the camera.
Yes, I gladly do that. I see you, J C. Hi there.
LJ, I've got after seven. You want to go ahead and start?
Let me just check Facebook and make sure our live stream is working.
Okay.
We are live streaming officially on Facebook, Conrad. If you'd like to call the meeting to order, we're good to go.
All right. It's, uh, seven oh three. I hereby call the July fifteenth, two thousand twenty Prosper Planning Commission Meeting to Order. We begin with the roll call and, uh, LJ, if you would do the roll call, please.
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to. Commissioners Crow.
Just unmuting. I'm present.
Thank you. Commissioner Duncan.
Present.
Commissioner Race. Commissioner Carter. Thank you. Commissioner Snyder.
Present.
And Commissioner Ritchie. Chair Best.
Here.
Thank you. Let the record show we have a quorum.
All right. To begin here, I want to indicate that, uh, we asked that anyone having business before the commission or any individual who would like to comment on business before the commission or other concerns, please let us know at the appropriate time. Come forward, state your name and your address. The meeting is being recorded. And so please speak clearly and loudly. Thank you. Our agenda is going to be the preliminary site plan for the Prosper Industrial Park. And, uh, not sure who's here that's going to do the presentation, but if if you'll step up and, uh, identify yourselves and your address, please begin your presentation.
Sure. Hi, uh, my name is Greg Hildreth. Um, I'm actually a citizen of Cumberland. I live on Green Street. I work for Allegheny County Department of Economic and Community Development. Um, I'm kind of filling in for Adam Patterson here tonight. About the, the proposed Prosper Tech Building, which is, uh, planned to be the, the new home of a local company. Have a existing facility, um, outside of Cumberland on Yule Highway, uh, and they're basically involved in an expansion of their existing business. And, uh, this, this building is. So I don't have a, a formal kind of presentation for you. But I'd be happy to kind of just talk through the slides if you'd like, or, or describe what we're looking at on the site plan if you would like. Also to take any questions that you might have about the project.
If you would, please, if you would describe in general, what you, what your project is and what you need. We understand that this is, you're looking for preliminary, uh, site plan approval and that you will be back at a later date with, uh, more up to date and revised drawings and hopefully we'll be able to do that live and see what's going on. So if you would, please.
Yeah, no problem. So, uh, the, the site plan we're looking at there, that's, uh, in the Frostburg Industrial Park. Um, as you, as you may know, uh, our office was involved in the development of the, development of the park, subdivision of the lots, construction of the cul-de-sacs there. And making it ready, uh, to attract business or, or to facilitate. So what we're looking at, um, it's kind of on the southern end of the industrial park there. Lot four, if you look at the subdivision flat. We're looking at the construction of a approximately twelve thousand square foot building. About half of that space will be for production and light manufacturing. The other half will be for more of an office, space environment, conference room, cubicles, offices. So the, uh, Berkeley Springs is kind of Berkeley Springs Instruments is, is kind of split in terms of their workforce. They have the, the, the manufacturing and production of their sensors and the various, uh, widgets that, that do the monitoring of kinds of assets for utility companies. Then they also have a, a pretty robust office section. Where the monitor the devices and, um, you know, do that, do that side of things. Also very interested in developing, um, new, new software and artificial intelligence. Help with their monitoring efforts. So it's a pretty exciting technology that they're. So the, the blue, the, the big blue rectangle there is the building itself. I, I think when we get to our next more, more complete kind of unveiling of what the building will look like, uh, I hope that you'll, you'll like the aesthetic of it, a fair amount of time and attention went into build the building. The kind of large black odd shape kind of to the northwest, top left of the building there. It's a, a pretty large paved area. It's designed that way to allow a tractor trailer to pull straight into the parking area there and then be able to back up to the building. So there's like kind of two narrow rectangles that are segmented in that area. Those are to represent, uh, like an eighteen wheeler as if it had pulled in there and then backed up to the building. Yep. So then you have, uh, parking kind of along the front of the building into the south. Uh, there will be a retaining wall constructed western edge where all the orange lines are, uh, they're going to have to cut into the hill there a little bit to, uh, to make the site work. Yeah, other, other than that, that's kind of the basics of the, the site design layout. There, there are some stormwater retention ponds in the front. I, on my screen, they're kind of blocked by our, our video feeds here. But there, there will be some stormwater management structures there kind of closer to the. Another thing that we, we had done kind of in preparation for this project, um, was renaming the courts there. So we named the, the one to the north Axon Court. The, the one to the south, Quantum Circle. Those names are kind of sciencey and, and techie and align with the, kind of the science, sciencey mind of, uh, of Gene, the guy that runs Berkeley Springs Instruments. So I thought it was kind of fitting for a, a technology building. Go ahead.
I, I don't see a north arrow. So the quantum circle would be the one at the top of the screen?
Uh, it's, it's actually the one to the south. So it's.
This north?
Yes, it generally, I, I believe that image is actually oriented true north.
Okay, the bottom is, the bottom is south.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Problem. So there will be two, uh, two entrances kind of to the parking area, uh, and this is kind of blocked on my screen with the, uh, the video feeds here, but there, it, it creates kind of a circular possibility of a circular traffic pattern coming in and out of the parking area there, south. I, I think the intention from B S I was to have the lot, the parking area in the front of the building be more to facilitate visitors and guests in the parking lot to the rear of the building, to be for staff. They also were planning to have.
Yeah.
There, there's a couple of spaces that are up against the southern edge of the building, uh, maybe five or six spaces. Yeah, right in there. Those, uh, they're, they're planning to install some, some E V stations for charging electric vehicles.
Oh, great.
We've also expressed interest in, constructing a solar rig on the roof. Uh, that, that would be kind of at a later date, but we are planning to do a, a standing seam roof there to make that installation a little easier when the time comes. So should be a, should be a, a modern and kind of sophisticated building. We're, we're, we're pretty excited about how it's, how it's shaping up here. I'm, I'm happy to take any questions about the, um, the building. I, I am going to be lacking in, in the engineering aspects where Adam would have been a little better. But I can try my best. And if, if you have any questions about the expansion project or the company, I can do my best with those as well.
Hearing no questions from any member of the commission. Do I have a motion to approve preliminary site plan for this project?
I would. Uh, this is Karen Crow. Um, I would like to move that we accept the preliminary site plan. I think it'd be a great asset to the community and we, we're really lucky to have it. Thank you.
I make a second, I make a second to that motion to.
I being you.
Kristin Carter.
Kristen, okay. All right.
Make a second motion to, for the proposed draft.
Okay, it's been moved in second and that we grant preliminary site approval for, uh, B S I Industrial Park Project. LJ, if you would, uh, hold the members present.
I'd be happy to. Roll call of the vote, please. Commissioner Crow.
I accept.
Commissioner Duncan.
I vote in favor as well.
Commissioner Carter.
I accept.
And Commissioner Snyder.
Aye, it's a good project.
Thank you. Let the record show that was a unanimous vote.
All right. Moving on, the second item on here is a preliminary site plan by, uh, Somerset Bank. So if there was, was that representative from Somerset Bank would please speak up and let us know what you're doing here.
Hi, my name is Michael Friedhoffer. I'm with Landmarks S G A L L C. We're the architects for Somerset Trust Company. We're located in Somerset, Pennsylvania. So do you, do you have the colored, um, site plan available there that might?
I do, sure.
It might just be a little easier when we come back to that.
You like that one?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Just makes it a little easier to read.
I can bump that up a little bit more too. Is that, is that a better view?
I think so.
Okay. Let me know how you'd like me to manipulate that. I'd be happy to move it around however suits you.
Okay. So Somerset Trust Company is looking to put a branch office in Prosper in the building that formerly held Wymer Auto. I'm sure everybody knows where the site is. The existing building is approximately twenty nine hundred square feet. Somerset Trust Company plans to utilize the entire building with the exception of the small lean-to addition that was on the rear where the drive-up lanes are shown. That would be removed. The building would be completely remodeled both on the exterior and the interior, and we have, um, rendering shown that we can come back to on that. But the bank, um, would like to establish a, you know, the, in, what is the sea of asphalt out there? They'd like to remove the two former gasoline pump canopies. Construct new islands at the ends of the parking areas, new sidewalks at the front and sides of the building, landscape areas. And would like to construct two drive-up lanes and a canopy at the rear of the building. Work would also require for the diagonal parking spaces that you see in the rear of the building there, extending a little bit into the current lawn area. And, um, that's pretty much, um, given in a nutshell, the, um, the bank is very excited about moving into the Frostburg area and we think this would be a good location for them. There's obviously a lot of access, um, on this site, as you can see, from a myriad of roads and driveway entrances and so forth. We don't plan on making any changes whatsoever to those. The, um, if you want to put the, do you have the colored renderings of the exterior? So that is the proposed exterior elevations. New cultured stone in lieu of the masonry that exists, the painted masonry that exists on the building. Repainting some of the existing roof and large faces that's currently painted red. And constructing a small vestibule at the front entrance where you see their logo there on the top elevation. Um, using some exterior insulation and finish system materials on the, can't be on the addition, the former addition that's on the side now in gable ends. And also on the rear where the drive-up lanes are. So this is a pretty accurate rendition, both in color and the, you know, materials that are being used. So if you go back to the floor plan. So this is the proposed floor plan for the building. So basically we're gutting the building inside. And we're, you know, occupying the entire building, including the, what were the former garage days. So as you can see, the, at the lower part, opposite where the accessible parking is, you can see where the new vestibule will be constructed in the front. And then a lobby. Teller area. Which is straight back there. And then a number of offices for various, you know, um, functions, um, the manager, the customer service, lending, investments, various things, conference room. Then there is a vault also with safe deposit boxes there, shown there. So we have, um, various other necessary things, the, the ATM, the night drop room and bathrooms, accessible toilets, waiting room. So we've utilized every, every square inch of the building. And then in the rear there, we're constructing two drive-up lanes. So both lanes will be accessible. One will be accessible by a transaction window behind the teller and the second lane will be accessible by the, um, pneumatic tube system, which you normally see in, in banks. We, we've laid out, laid out the site, is, is, you know, obviously the building is, and its location is dictated, but we've laid out the site the best we could to, uh, make the parking work as best as possible. And we have more parking than is required than, you know, from the ordinance. So we feel that that's sufficient.
Has any contact been made with State Highway about your proposed, uh, moving on to this site location?
There, there hasn't been at this time. Um, we're not changed, proposing any changes whatsoever to the driving lanes or the entrances or such.
I think you do need to contact State Highway. This is Ray Race. I joined a little late. I have a lot of concern about the eastern, uh, entrance and exits. And, uh, I think you talked to State Highway. They're going to want to know what's going on here because anytime in Maryland, we make a change in use on the buildings.
Okay.
They evaluate that. And that, um, particularly concerned about the right out going on the forty. Uh, coming right out of the drive-through, that's gonna, I, I, I think that's a conflict. You're going to see people that is going to come out of there and make a left. They're not going to abide by that right turn only. So I'm willing to bet that they're going to ask you to consider closing that and just keep one entrance. Normally they don't allow multiple entrances for sites anymore that have the ability to have internal circulation.
Right, right, I understand.
Yeah, I wouldn't imagine that you'd have much more traffic than when this place was originally a gas station, but I'm sure the traffic count on forty, uh, today is much more than what it was back when, uh, it was a gas station.
I would agree with you, Conrad.
Sure, we can reach out to them on this. As I said, we have many opportunities here for access onto the site.
Right, right.
Even if they told you to, to close that off, I'm, I don't see that that is an impediment to, to, uh, the services that you could provide on this site.
Right, that's correct.
Any other questions by any other members of the commission? Hearing none, do I have a motion for the preliminary site approval for Somerset?
This, this is.
I heard somebody start to speak. Go ahead.
I do have a comment in, in terms of, um, this is, this is Karen Crow and, um, I, I appreciate they're putting some token trees in those islands, but there are definitely and there's more opportunity if you could. There's, there's just a lot of pavement there. And, um, if additional trees could be placed in the western island there, I, I would appreciate that.
Are you talking?
Our world is, is heating up and, um, the more trees you can get in there.
Are you talking about the island, the curved island to the left?
To the west.
Yeah, if north, north is up, it would be down there. That, that is outside of, that's outside of the property.
Right, that.
So the property line is there that she's showing with the cursor. So.
Yeah, Karen, that looks like it's State Highway property.
Okay.
It was taken at some point.
Yeah. They own every side.
You truly are an island.
Yeah, so we would have room on the, uh, eastern, the southeastern side, but that is about it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm always trying to bring things up when I can.
Yeah, the property's been a lot of acquisitions there when they redid the, uh, area.
Yeah, there's just a lot of pavement.
Yeah.
Yeah, we understand.
Other than that, uh, the project looks really good. Except for the issue with the ingress and egress.
Yeah, I'll speak with them. And we are limiting, uh, the northern northeastern access, uh, to right out because they typically don't allow any left outs crossing a turn lane. Um, so I will probably also limit the, uh, northern, northwestern side too. I, I don't, I'm not aware of them any, or ever allowing a uh, across a turn lane to go west. That's just a traffic impediment. Um, but we'll try, but I don't see that happening. And then south, south entrances will obviously all be uh, right out as it's one way. And then the, uh, southwestern entrance will be an entrance. So we are slightly restricted with all things surrounded by S H A land, but
Any other comments by any other commissioner? Do I have a motion?
Chair Best, if I may make a recommendation, please, I'm sorry to interrupt. But, um, as we're looking at this, we're looking at the preliminary site plan and we're also looking at a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the Drive-Thru Service permitted only by special exception. So when we craft the motion, we can include preliminary site plan, recommendation to Board of Zoning Appeals and State Highway uh, communication.
Okay, so you, you want to do it in one motion or two?
I think that's entirely up to you, but I think it could be done in one motion if, and we could capture everything in that motion.
All right, fine. Do you have a motion, uh, for approval structured as LJ has suggested?
Conrad, this is J C Duncan. I will make a motion for the preliminary site plan approval uh, with the caveat that it be, uh, reviewed obviously by State Highway. And also for a recommendation that, uh, the special exception be granted for the drive-through service.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
It's Jeff. I'll make a second.
All right, it's removed in second. LJ, if you'll call the roll, please.
I'd be happy to. Chair Best, um, Commissioner Crow. Uh, I move that we um, approve the, the preliminary plan. I, I, I agree. Thank you. Commissioner Duncan.
I vote in favor.
Thank you. Commissioner Race.
Aye.
Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
Commissioner Snyder.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Let the record show that's a unanimous vote in favor of the preliminary site plan and the recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals to approve the special exception for the drive-through service. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. You, those of you from Somerset Bank, you may leave the conference if you show desire, or you may hang in, uh, to hear our next, uh, case.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the A C project. And who do we have here presenting?
Hey Conrad, before we start, this is Ray.
Yes.
Pennmark is a client of mine. Uh, I'm not actively involved in anything with them right now. Uh, but I'll leave that up to you. If you want me to recuse myself from this, I'm fine with that either way.
If you're not actively involved in this project, I see no reason for you to refuse yourself, Ray.
All right, then.
Okay.
All right, um, Justin Bartholomew and Christopher Cafiero from Pennmark Management are here on behalf of the Frostburg Plaza.
Okay, if you would, uh, please let us know what your, what your intention is here. I know that, I know you need any special exceptions through the, uh, drone and boarding appeals for, uh, a drive-through. Is there something else involved here?
No, we, we think that it's in the best interest of, of the property in the area to, uh, be able to market the property correctly that we get the special, or proceed with applying for the special exception for the drive-through use. The image on the screen right now is the former Pizza Hut building. Um, it shows the drive-through. However, can you start with the site plan, please?
Sure.
All right, so, uh, on the screen now is the site plan that shows the former Pizza Hut building. I, it's twenty-five hundred square feet, um, and as a pizza hut and a dining restaurant. Uh, that use will probably never be, um, acceptable or a realistic. That use will probably never be acceptable or a realistic option. In order to market the property correctly and attract those that are looking for freestanding buildings with drive through opportunities, the drive through has to already be a permitted use. What we have seen is that when you start the conversations with these tenants, they will ultimately turn down the conversation until we can guarantee that there will not be any delays or hiccups in getting things approved. And that is the primary purpose for doing this now is so that way we can market it correctly and not have any hiccups in trying to get the property leased up with what's best for not only the, the environment, the, the shopping center and the community. So we actually have two site plans here. The one shows the Pizza Hut building and the second one will show the former movie theater space. Both of which site plan shows multiple lanes and bypass lanes.
As I understand your request, you're looking for a favorable approval of the Board of Zoning Appeals to put drive through windows in these two locations up at the Plaza area. You don't have anybody right now that's asking for that as yet, but you want to have that ability in case you find somebody to market your space to. Is that correct?
Yes, and I, I've already had multiple conversations. I handle leasing for the property and, and there's been a, a variety of uses that I've already been approached, or I've approached that the question has come up about the drive through.
And I, I do have one question. This is J.C. Duncan. On the, the movie theater, just so I'm understanding the site plan, you, you would be basically looking at the drive through to like go in and then loop back around and come back out, not having the traffic go behind the shopping center. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
That's correct. There is a nice wide area back there of about 38 feet of pavement already. And we're, we're taking that into account and using what's already asphalted.
This is Karen Crowe. For that building, you're looking at just the drive through. There won't be an in-store establishment.
You're talking for the, the whole space? The, the space ultimately may end up needing to be divided and, and depending on the use, that, that space is up to 10,000 square feet. So you could go to a 1,500 square foot drive through use or three theater screens in there. And if you run the length of the building, it could ultimately create three smaller stores, which we have looked at the possibility of doing as well, which would tie into the drive through use.
So it, it, it wouldn't be just drive through?
No, no, no.
I wondered if it's just a prescription service.
Well, I think Karen, there's not any specific tenant or use at this point. I think that's what they're, okay.
Thanks for the clarification.
I think with COVID happening, you know, the world of retail is changing. And.
Right.
These drive through windows are going to be more popular. Not everyone wants, not everyone wants to walk into the store any longer.
I have a question. Roses receiving tractor trailers, do they drive all the way around or they turn back and head to the east?
Okay, good question. They, they do come in from the opposite side of the site behind the. I know him as conduit.
Continue.
Continue. They come in on the other side of the site, drive past the whole back of the building and then back in parallel to the loading dock for the loading area for roses. And then when they exit, they would exit out this, pass this drive through.
Okay.
But we, we see the traffic on this side of the site as very minimal. That's why we, we felt comfortable and having this traffic movement of someone leaving the drive through window, going into the parking lot and being able to do a nice big U-turn and get out. There's really no need for them to travel across the back of the, the property.
I, I would be more concerned about a conflict with a tractor trailer. I think you could easily handle that with some signage and some good striping in the back. And, you know, whenever you guys would get a site plan for approval, that could be addressed at that point.
We agree.
Do any other commissioners have any questions? Do you have, do I hear a motion for the approval of a formal? Let me get this right. Recommending a favorable approval to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the. Right to put in. Drive through. Window service at the two locations on this large property.
And if I may, Chair, we are looking at a preliminary site, site plan approval here too.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't notice that, okay.
Kind of a two-part motion, preliminary site plan and recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals, please.
Okay, so we're looking for the same thing we had on the previous one as far as site plan and drive through.
Yes, sir.
Chairman Best, this is J.C. Duncan. I will go ahead and make the motion for the preliminary site plan approval as well as a recommendation for the special exception to be granted for the drive through service in both locations on this property.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. This is Jeff.
Okay, it's been moved in second and any additional discussion? LJ, if you'll call the roll.
Gladly, sir, thank you. Commissioner Crowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
I vote in favor.
Commissioner Race?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Snyder?
Aye.
Thank you. Let the record show that's a unanimous vote in favor.
All right, thank you for listening and, and reviewing our plan today. We appreciate your time.
Thank you very much for joining us, Justin and Chris. We appreciate your plans for our town, thanks.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You too.
Okay. Bye now.
Bye-bye.
Okay, next item on our agenda is the review and approval of the minutes from the March 11th meeting, which we did in fact review and approve a week ago, but LJ wasn't present, so.
And I apologize sincerely for that. So for. For the record, if we could go through that motion one more time, please.
Certainly. I was not at the meeting, so I had, well, anyway. Do I hear a motion to re-approve these meetings minutes?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve them. Seen how I approved them a week ago, but yes.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second and that we approve the minutes. March 11th. Frostburg Planning Commission meeting. LJ, if you'll call a roll.
Yes, sir, roll call of the vote. Commissioner Crowe?
I approve.
Commissioner Duncan?
I approve.
Commissioner Race?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
And Commissioner Snyder?
Aye.
Thank you. Let the record show that Commissioner Snyder moved to approve the minutes. Commissioner Duncan seconded the motion and the vote was unanimous.
All right, next item is the Planning Commission Training Course information. LJ, if you'll. Take over on that one, please.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. I've been in contact with the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association and the Maryland Department of Planning, and there is a free virtual training class coming up on July 21st. I checked our training records and I've been in contact with a couple commissioners where we need some updates on training. Or there's the possibility that you have your certificates on file and we do not. So if, if that's the case, I'd like to try to straighten that out. I'd like to also take this opportunity to introduce Ms. Bethany Fife, who is present here in this meeting. And she is our new permit specialist and code enforcement officer for the city of Frostburg. And she just started her employment with us this week. And she and I will register for this training on the 21st. So, you know, we're certified in it as well. So this is not the only opportunity. So for those of you who may need to update your training, you can attend this one on the 21st, or I can provide you with an internet link where you can do it at your own convenience, on your own time and still receive your certificate. So I just wanted to update everyone on that. And if you'd like us to register you for this training, just let us know, we'll gladly do it.
LJ, you said update your training. Is there a mandatory requirement for continuing to add on that, or once we take it, we're required to do it once?
I think it expires at some point because there were a couple that, a couple commissioners who were sure they had taken the training in the past, but there was no record of it.
Oh, that's interesting.
With MPCA or MDP. So one commissioner has already completed the training. And so that's updated.
Yeah, you'll have to check mine because I took.
You're good, I checked yours. You're, you're listed as up to date on the website.
That's weird. Because we all took it at the same time, it shouldn't have been. Yeah, something's not right with that then.
Okay.
But when you're, if you do attend that and they have a question and answer session, could you ask them if there's a, like a required refresher or anything like that on that? Or is it just whenever you sit on it once, that's all you need to do?
Sir, I'd be happy to do that. I'd be happy to do that.
I have a comment on this too. I was one of the ones that had to retake the course. I did it over the weekend online and it struck me as I was reading the stuff about smart growth, how the Maryland planning. State planning is to try and group people closer together so that they can ride public transportation and, and go to offices. How that's all gone out the window in the last two, three months.
Yep. Uh, you're, we're actually seeing some changes in green building criteria, Conrad, because of that.
That's a shame.
What kind of changes?
Well, you know, you've done lead, I assume. And under the site development criteria, there's a, a whole lot of points that's to be garnered for public transportation and access to such like that.
Yeah, okay.
I understand there's talks in a way that they're talking about changing a lot of that based on what's happened in our country and worldwide over the last couple of months. Because, you know, what they're requiring right now is not safe for everybody. Interesting. Yeah, it's. The effects of the virus and what we're seeing as far as from a planning standpoint. Is going to completely rewrite some of our planning books all the way across country.
I think we're just beginning to see some trends and I think coincidence of the requests for favorable recommendations for drive throughs are, are a glimpse of that.
Well, that's what the one, the guy from the Plaza indicated.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
We done on that one, the commissioners? All right, let's move on to staff reports.
It's time to submit the annual report to the Maryland Department of Planning regarding the number of new residential permits that have been issued. This report is for the calendar year of 2019. So in 2019, we had, we issued six new residential permits, which is somewhat of a banner year for us.
That's good.
It's very good, very good. So the six permits that we issued were for 109 and 111 Candlewick Court in the Pritchard Farm Development. Number 110A in Braddock Heights. 315 Bernard Street. 222 Braddock Road and 89 Candlewick Court, also in the Pritchard Farm subdivision. There's a series of questions that we also answer when we submit this report. And one important one of note is. Are there any issues that planning can assist you with in 2020? If yes, please list. So I have definitely noted that we will require assistance updating our comprehensive plan. That update will be due in 2021. And we will need to include a housing element. That's a new house bill that was approved and that's something that we don't currently have in our comprehensive plan. So I have requested assistance with that.
And this, all you're doing here is reporting to us that you did, or do we need to? Give you permission to send this report?
I, I need a motion in a second that you approve this report so that I may submit it to the mayor and council and get their approval and then submit it to the Maryland Department of Planning, please.
All right. Do I have a motion? Who was that, please?
Ray.
All right, Ray's moved. Do I have a second?
I second. This is Kristen Carter.
The move in second that. We give approval for forwarding this report to. City Council and, and further submission to the Office of the Secretary of the Maryland Department of Planning. LJ, if you'll. Read the, the roll call.
Yes, sir, thank you. Commissioner Crowe?
I approve the submission of the report.
Commissioner Duncan?
I vote in favor.
Commissioner Race?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
And Commissioner Snyder?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Let the record, let the record reflect that that's a unanimous vote in favor of the submission. I appreciate it, thank you all. Thank you.
Hey, and although he never had to open his mouth, I think we ought to thank. Mr. Rogers for being in attendance as a backup plan. I think that was a good idea.
You're absolutely right, Chair Best. Thank you for reminding me. I would like to extend my deepest appreciation to our Western Regional Planner, Mr. Joe Rogers, with the Maryland Department of Planning for assisting me. I'd also like to extend my thanks to our city administrator, Elizabeth Stallman, for assisting me and, and helping me work through technological difficulties and. Runings, many test runs to get to this point, but I'm really happy we did get to this point and I appreciate your flexibility as well. So thanks to everyone for the support and the understanding. I appreciate it immensely. Well done, LJ. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Hearing no other business before the commission, I declare the meeting adjourned. Goodbye.
Thanks very much, have a wonderful evening.
All right, see everybody.
I'll take care.